All right, so we are talking about exam questions because those were the only things I didn't finish going over. Or start for that matter. Okay. So I have to admit, I wrote them all down and I might be doing one or two extras because I was worried I missed one. So anyway. This question talks about nicotinamide adenine tine nucleotide, NAD, or the reduced form of NADH is an important biological reducing agent. Does a number of essential roles in metabolism, including as a coenzyme in biological redox reactions. Given the following two half reactions, their standard reduction potentials determine delta G standard for the following redox react. So this is the goal. And one of the important things here is you don't actually have any information about if this is supposed to be spontaneous or non-spontaneous. You don't, you don't know. You, is it supposed to be galvanic? What, 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 you don't have that information. So what you do have though, is you do have information about what's on which side of my reacting some products. So here I have NADH as a reactant and here it's a product. And I also have my protons as a reactant and here I have protons as a reactant. So essentially you don't actually have to analyze this for what's more likely to happen. You don't have that information. I mean, you, you have standard E cell. Or standard reduction potentials, but you're not really asked to do that here. All you're asked to do is for this reaction, whatever it is. Whether, whether it's a galvanic setup, the more likely to happen, or whether it's an electrolytic setup, less likely to happen. You don't know. Particularly until you analyze it, but all you really have to do is say, ah, okay. So because my protons are both on the product or on the reactant side. That means that this standard reduction potential stays as standard reduction. So this gets to be my 0.82 volts. Then the, because my NADH is flipped, that means I also need to flip that sign. So I can go ahead and go ahead and add the positive version of that. So essentially because these are on opposite sides, I'm going to flip this. And that'll get me my E cell standard. So that gets me a positive 1.14. So now really what I would like is I now need an equation that goes ahead and relates my E cell standard to my whatever I'm being asked for, delta G standard. So this is the thing now where that's the thing that I want. And what I should be able to have is an equation that looks something like this. Negative in F, oh, I got that on the wrong side. Hold on just a minute. Stop sharing and let me grab. Is one of those times where it's like, I don't remember what all else I have up. So let me go ahead and unshare for a moment and then reshare. We'll still reshare the whole thing. Screen. There we go. All better. You guys don't need to see that. Okay. So you have my potentially useful information page. And did I get my equation correct down here in the bottom? I did. Delta G standard is equal to NF E standards. And then the only thing I need to double check is me to grab my value for Faraday's constant. And I also. So Faraday's constant is just a constant. So F is E cell is this thing we just said, 1.14. In, I do have to figure out in. So in is the number of electrons transferred. So in this case, all I really need to do is take a look at how many electrons there are in each reaction. I have two here and I have four here. These need to be the same. So since these need to be the same, I should have four electrons transferred. To essentially make those things match. Oh, wait, no, that's not how I do that this time. That's right. This is tricky. It's not for just to make it match. We have to match the stoichiometry here. The stoichiometry here actually shows you that you have half of an oxygen. And how did we lose the other stoichiometry out of this problem? Huh, there should have been a two here and there should have been a two, sorry, sorry, should have been a two for that hydrogen. So there's a little typo in this problem. So there should be a two for that proton, but the one for the water is correct and a one half for the oxygen is correct. So it is missing actually one stoichiometry point. So essentially what that tells you is that tells you that between the two and the four, it's the two electrons that we're actually using. So now I can go ahead and finish out my math. 96,485 times two. And that gets me this very long number, negative 2, 19, 955.8. Which that's going to be in joules. So this is getting updated by the way. So right now this is just in coulombs, but this is going to be updated to also be in joules. So you guys can see what that is. So this is going to be negative 220 kilojoules. So that did have a fair number of twists and turns in there. So that, that was a little bit tricky in there. Next up, number five, what's the best reducing agent? So anything that can be a reducing agent, this is going to be something that allows reduction to happen. So this is going to be something that essentially gives up electrons. So I need something that has electrons to give. All of these are written as reductions, which means everything that could give up electrons is actually over on the right hand side. So I want to consider all of these species over here on the right. So there is a kind of a, two tricky parts in here. So we don't actually care about the platinum positive. Let me erase that in a way so you guys can still see it. Because essentially this doesn't work as a reducing agent because it's already given up all of its electrons. Same thing with the calcium 2 plus. We want a reducing agent. We need something that has electrons to give and neither one of those things can. So I don't want B and I don't want D. That gives me three things left. And I want something that is most likely to be reduced. So I am looking for the most positive number. Oh, it gives up the electrons. So this is the thing that is most likely to be oxidized. So I'm looking for. Gosh. So I apologize. So the writing here giving, giving up electrons, that would be my oxidation. So everything I have highlighted is correct because these are all the things that have the electrons to give. But that does make all of these oxidation reactions, which means that what I'm looking for over here on the right is I'm looking for the most negative value. So I want the most negative value in order to give up electrons. So that will be the thing most easily oxidized. And that is going to be this negative value here. Which then relates to my component here. So I think the person who asked about this wanted to know why it wasn't the, the bromide ion. And that one, I will admit, would have thrown me a little bit, but basically these values here on the right are not in order. They're not in any order at all. So you actually need to evaluate what order those should go in and analyze them for the most positive or the most negative, depending on what you actually need. Cause they're not actually written in numerical order. Okay. Which of the following statements is false about galvanic and electrolytic cells? A galvanic cell converts chemical energy to electrical energy. That is basically the whole point of a galvanic salt. That's the reason why we have the wire. That's the reason why there's the separated two half reactions. That one is true. The react reaction electrolytic cell is a non-spontaneous reaction. This is also true. That's why we connect a battery to it. That's why it goes in that reverse order, all of that jazz, which means that the galvanic being spontaneous is also true. D is a little bit difficult to parse out just because we don't usually talk about it this way, that we're converting electrical energy to chemical energy. But that is essentially what we're doing. When we talk about things like electroplating. We are basically exchanging that idea of applying a current to something to get a chemical reaction that we want to happen. So that's also true. So this one always seems a little strange. A wire needs to connect the two electrodes in electrolytic cell. And that's actually wrong. But basically this is that part where you can have a molten cell in one place. And you don't actually have to connect these two electrodes. They're usually connected to a battery somewhere over here. And I suppose if you really wanted to. You're, you're basically just going to have the circuit completed by the molten salt that's down here in the liquid. So you actually don't have to connect the two electrodes here particularly at all. These need to be able to apply a current and your molten stuff will complete this circuit. In a solution, not at equilibrium. You have some concentrations. What's the concentration of the unionized acid? If delta G is a certain number and delta G standard is also a certain number. So this is getting at that idea that we have ways to compare Q and K in particular reactions. So there is an equation. And I am going to flip over and just make sure I don't miss any parts because as you might have noticed. I'm doing this kind of early in the morning and I haven't had my coffee yet. Okay. So we are looking for something with delta G and delta G standard. That can talk about what's actually happening. So we want Q. So R T L in Q plus. So we're looking for this react. So they're looking for this. I know that in part because I have both delta G and I have delta G standard. But, and then the strange thing is I'm asked for a particular concentration and they went ahead and gave me a reaction. That was actually really nice of them. So considering then that I can supply in here that Q is going to look like this. My products over my reactants all raised to their stoichiometric coefficients as exponents. So that means that the thing I'm actually looking for is this HF concentration down here. So from here, now I can actually just plug in all of my numbers. So I have a, so the one thing I do need to keep in mind is what is my value for R? So R is, where is R? There it is, over here. So in this case, I need R to be in joules. So I need my R to work with my delta G and delta G standard. So I need this 8.314 business. So my, so I'm just going to transfer everything into joules to make my life a little bit easier. So this is 2,500 is equal to negative 19,700. So there's my delta G and delta G standard. Plus our 8.314 times the temperature. We're not given one, so we're going to assume that it is 25 degrees Celsius. So we're going to use 298.15. And this is then the natural log of Q that we're going to be solving for Q. So then from here, 25,000 plus 19,700. To get that to move over to the other side. So plus 19,700 plus 19,700. Gives me a new line of algebra. 8.314 298. The natural log of Q. So then I can divide this by 8.314 and I can divide this by 298. So I get 8.956 is equal to the natural log of Q. When you look where the natural log is on your calculator, you should see basically right near it, something where this is E to the positive 8.956. So you do need to know how to get in and out of your natural log. Just like you had to get in and out of a logarithm, to get in and out of a natural log. This is equal to 7,753. So that then has to be equal to my proton concentration times my fluoride concentration, all divided by HF. And we have numbers for those. Both of my products here are point one. So then I have 7,753 is equal to 0.1 times 0.1 divided by my HF concentration that I'm looking for. So I can go ahead and essentially flip these around and say that my HF, not flip them around, but do some multiplication and division. 001 divided by 7,753. Scientific notation to make my life easier. I get 1.29 times 10 to the negative six. Let's go find and see what my options are. Yeah, this one, I got 1.29, this is 1.26 or 1.28. So I'm, I'm off in that last digit of rounding, but that's, that's definitely close enough considering that it's the only thing that's 10 to the negative six. Everything else is much, much higher than that. So I don't really care that I'm off in that very last digit. Because there's a lot of exponents in here. So I'm okay with that. Okay. Next up, number nine. Determine the products generate the electrodes and electrolysis of the molten salt, iron chloride. Iron two chloride. So the main thing here to remember is you start with these things. These are the things that you begin with. So because of that, you can always look back at the chart. I think it's here? No, over here. Yeah. So granted, that's my giant chart. So just for clarity sake, I'm going to use the little chart. Where I still have many, many, many things highlighted. But basically what I'm looking for is I'm looking for information on where I can find both of those reactants. So there's my chloride ions and where's my iron? Over here. Cause I need those to do something. So my iron two plus can gain electrons to become iron solid. My chloride ions can release electrons, can lose electrons to become the chlorine gas. So then when I take a look at this. I should see this being able to gain two electrons to become iron solid and this should be able to lose electrons. We'll go ahead and make all that match. So because of this, I should be able to then say that this is my reduction reaction on top with the iron. My oxidation reaction is with the chloride. So now what's the question? Generate, oh, at the electrodes. I need to know both of them. So this is a red cat. So the iron solid is being formed at the cathode. And this is an ox. So chlorine gas is being formed at the anode. So that's what I'm looking for. Oh, but they were nice and they did not actually give me iron solid. They gave me iron as a liquid. That's fine. This honestly is just being more honest because this is a molten salts and that's hot enough that you're going to have iron as a liquid. So they didn't make you pick between liquid and solid, but they're the pure forms of iron is what you're looking for. So I want this to be formed at the cathode. So here's my iron form at the cathode. And I would like to have chlorine gas formed at the anode. Which one does that? Chlorine. Oh, also gave me that as a liquid. That's kind of, that's fine. Again, they're not making me pick. So I'm a little weirded out that the chlorine at the anode is a liquid. But I didn't dig into this question as far as looking into exactly how hot things are or what pressure everything is under. And they're not making me choose between liquid and gas forms. So I'm okay with this. So I wanted three and four based on that. And that's what I'm looking for. Three and four. Okay. I unfortunately did not bring anything to drink with me, so can probably do one more. Oh, ironically. Which direction was the reaction proceeds? And how does delta G compare to delta G standard? So there's a couple of different options of how to do this. So I can, so again, so I've, I've two, I have two routes. Through this question. Route one is I can go ahead and use that equation again. Delta G plus R T L and Q. This is possibly the faster route. So basically they give delta G standard. So that's, and we're going to put everything into joules. Plus 8.314. That's supposed to be the number four times 298.15 times the natural log of Q and Q is products over reactants. So that's NO squared divided by N2O2. So that is 0.1 squared divided by 0.1, which is just going to wind up being 0.1. So the natural log of 0.1 is what my delta G is equal to. And I mentioned that there were two different ways to do this and we'll, we'll go ahead and look at both of them. They're going to be pretty similar though by the end. So 8.314 times 298.15 times the natural log of point one. All of that gets me. So my delta G naught is still there minus 5,708. So this is actually as far as I really needed to go because now I can see that since this is a negative number, I'm going to have another negative number in here. But yeah, so this is negative 10,108. That is just in joules. But the lovely thing with doing it this way is my negative 4,400 is that value of delta G standard. It was right here all along. And then I can basically compare to see how it's changing. And my delta G value is becoming more negative. So in this case, I can go ahead and say that since my delta G value is more negative. This should still be going in the forward direction, still a spontaneous reaction. So I can go ahead and do that like that there. I mentioned there was another way to do this and this really just depends on, oh, I need to do this as 298, not 298.15. Look at that. It was given. The other way that I was considering doing it, but honestly, I think I like the way I already did it better. But your other option, if you really wanted it, is if the first thing you really thought of is hey, I could go ahead and I could find K. And then I could go ahead and compare the value of Q and the value of K if I had K. You have the value of delta G standard. You could go ahead and find K, compare Q and K, and then make your decision based off of that. You should wind up with the same answer, but then you have to conceptualize what that delta G and delta G standard is. Whereas this way we just solved for it. So I think, I think I like the way I did it first, the better way, which is going ahead and getting that value since that's a part of the prompt. So I'm going to go ahead and leave it like that. What's the value of the equilibrium constant for the cell reaction below? So I want K. So K is the goal. And I have all of this mess. So we also need something that works with E cell standard. So I'm going to go ahead and grab all of this, but there should be something in here that talks about my standard E cell and K and down here towards the bottom. Was I given any information? About temperature? There it is, temperature. But that's 25 degrees Celsius. So I get to use the, what I think of as the shortcut equation. Where did that thing go? It was over here. 0.0592 divided by N. 0.0592 divided by N times the log of K. So in the reaction or in the equation, there's a little V. And that really is just to mention that this is in volts. So that you know that we are actually taking care of enough of the constants in here to get you a number in volts out the other side. So one thing I can do is I can go ahead and take a look at this and because I'm going from 10 two plus to 10 minus. That would be two electrons. And then my iron to iron two plus, that's also two electrons. So N is equal to two. Then from there I need E cell standard. So I also need to know which one's my oxidation and which one's my reduction. So my, my 10 reaction is being reduced. Which means that my iron is being oxidized. Lovely, lovely. So now I need numbers. So in general in here, I'm going to cross my fingers and see if they're both in here. They're not. I have to go to the big table. Sad. I have the big table. I just don't know that y'all can see it. So I basically am just going to spend a little bit of time digging and finding the numbers that I need because they have to be on here somewhere. Ooh, here's 10. I covered it up. It was something else. Black. So 10, I'm just going to grab my reduction potential. It's negative 0.14. Negative, negative. That's important. And then I need my iron reactions actually down here. And as reduction, my iron is negative 0.45. So as reduction, that's negative 0.45. But this is written as oxidation. So my oxidation potential is positive 0.45. And then I can just add those two numbers together. Point four five plus negative point one four. That gives me a standard E cell of That gives me a standard E-cell of positive zero point three one. Uh, since this is positive, I actually already know that these numbers that are uh, negative exponents are wrong. Because this should be something that goes, is product favored, is product driven. Um, and now again, I just need to plug everything in. Um, so point point three one times two divided by point oh five nine two. Gets me essentially ten. Point four seven is equal to the log of K. And then this is ten to the ten point four seven is equal to K. Um, one thing to remind you in here uh, is to follow the formula. And if there's no extra negative signs in here, don't put extras negative signs in. You need to just follow the math essentially. Um, I actually get uh, two point nine. Seven times ten to the ten. Um, but basically this is another one of those times where I'm going to focus on these exponents because those exponents are the thing that is the most different. And maybe I just carried extra decimal places. Um, or actually this might, no, I don't know. That's interesting. But anyway, uh, I get C because this ten to the negative, this ten to the positive ten is the thing that I'm looking to match. Um, because that's, that is the closest number that I have. Um, calculate uh, E-cell standard, whether spontaneous or non-spontaneous, under standard conditions. Um, this is another one of finding the reactions, uh, to be honest. So again, and we do care about which way this is actually going. So I need something where my iron three plus is getting reduced to iron two plus. Um, so I gotta find that iron three plus reaction in here. Where is that? Hmm hmm. Oh, here it is. Uh, so if you can't, so I know it's hard to tell what I'm doing. But basically as I'm scrolling, I'm using the top line here as a straight edge. Uh, so here's iron three plus. That's positive point seven seven as written. As one of my reductions and then my water reaction is going to peroxide. So I have got to find peroxide. The other thing I now know is since I can look at this and know that my iron is being reduced, I'm actually looking for that peroxide on the reactant's side. Um, as I am trying to find, as it's in the reaction given, my peroxide is actually reduce, is actually oxidized. But all of these are written as reduction reactions. So I'm trying to find one with peroxide being oxidized. So there's my H two O two plus two protons goes to water. That's positive one point seven eight. Yep. Um, so my peroxide, when it's reduced, is positive one point seven eight. Um, it's not being reduced here though. It is in fact being oxidized because my peroxide is on the product side. So that means when this is oxidized, that is negative one point uh, seven eight. So I can go ahead and, they must have updated the table. Um, cause if I take my negative one point seven eight plus zero point seven seven, I get negative one oh one volts. Um, so they must have updated some of the values in the table. Um, but regardless, uh, I have two different options in here. So either C or D are what I'm looking for because that's got my negative number. But because this is negative for the E-cell, my answer is non-spontaneous. So E-cell is positive in galvanic cells and negative in electrolytic cells for non-spontaneous. Next up is um, what is the equilibrium constant for the reaction? Um, and what I have is something at two ninety eight. And I have a value of enthalpy and I have a value of entropy. And I want K. K is the goal. Well, that's lovely. Uh, what that actually means is I'm actually going to use delta G standard is equal to negative RT ln K. But I don't have delta G standard. So I have to solve for it. But I can do that. Um, so delta G standard is equal to, uh, and I'm, I'm not flipping back over to my equation sheet for this one. Um, I can, but um, it's not a bad idea. La da 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 da. There we go. Negative RT ln K. Yes. And the one right above it. Um, and I'm just double checking, but this is lol at two ninety eight. Um, so all I really have to do is make sure all of my units match. Uh, in this case, because I'm going to head back to R, which is going to be in joules. I'm just going to do everything in joules. Uh, fifty eight thousand minus two ninety eight point one five times negative one seventy six point six. So. So, no, all right. So I'm sorry that I'm not going to have time to cut out all of my calculations. But I don't, I don't unfortunately have additional time for video editing in here. Um, so good news, y'all can um, uh, you can always speed me up or slow me down in the recording. Um, so that's what I get for delta G standard. Again, I'm doing this in joules. And then that way, when I need to go ahead and compare it to my negative RT, this is five thousand three hundred seventy eight is equal to negative eight point three one four times the temperature two ninety eight point one five times the natural log of K. Um, so I guess one thing I will go ahead and say is uh, one, I'm sorry, we haven't gotten out your new equation sheet yet. Um, maybe by the time that this is posted, it will be. So you guys will be happy about that. Um, I would basically practice with that uh, once, once you have it. Uh, because I do think that part of this is just being able to recognize what equation do I need? And how do I get from point A to point B? So keeping in mind that you'll have an equation sheet, be able to identify what variables do I have and what connects to what is, is part of this. Uh, so I get eight point seven five. There we go. Eight point seven. It's like, what, what number was this? This was nineteen. Eight point seven five. There we go. So this mostly is making sure that you can recognize that um, given enthalpy and entropy, I can solve for delta G and then I can plug things in from there. A galvanic cell is created using a standard hydrogen electrode and a chromium electrode. Under standard conditions, what is delta G? Okay, so one, this says that it's a galvanic cell. So that means that I know I have a standard hydrogen electrode and I have something going from chromium solids to chromium three plus. So solids to chromium three plus and a standard hydrogen electrode. So when I come over here, uh, that standard hydrogen electrode is my zero. Um, so I mean, so there's no reaction for it, but the standard hydrogen electrode is, is my zero mark. Um, so that is something that y'all should just know that all of your um, that we use hydrogen as zero and that's part of how our electrochemistry builds on itself. Uh, so then from there, all I need to do is find my um, chromium reaction or I'm looking for that chromium three plus to chromium solids. Uh, on here, there are a couple of ones that are tempting, but again, I want something that goes to chromium solid. So therefore I'm going to use the negative zero point seven four. But that's its reduction. Uh, I can also see on here, I'm going to highlight these to make it a little more obvious. Uh, since this is a galvanic cell, my hydrogen electrode is up here. My chromium is down here. Uh, so therefore, because my chromium is closer to the bottom, I would actually expect this my chromium to be oxidized and my hydrogen to be reduced. Because this is in a galvanic cell. Um, so uh, granted, I'm going to copy over my negative zero point seven four as my standard reduction. Um, standard reduction equals negative zero point seven four. But this is actually getting oxidized. So my chromium, uh, so this is one of those things where I actually need this to be positive. Uh, and that's actually going to be my E-cell standard. Because my hydrogen electrode is just zero. And it would be zero for the reduction. It would be zero for the oxidation. But it's, it is being reduced. So we'll go ahead and claim that one. Um, oh, whoopsie, need to write that correctly. My chromium is being oxidized. So when I add these together, uh, I get an E-cell standard of positive zero point seven four. Now, the thing is, is this, this says under standard conditions, what is delta G? Um, so you might be really tempted to write out an equation and do a lot of extra steps. But remember the under standard conditions, that's just that one molar and one atmosphere. Under standard conditions, um, delta G is the same as delta G naught. They're identical under standard conditions. Because we should basically just be saying, we are at that place where we make all of those assumptions. So those are the same under standard conditions. So all I actually need is, I need to compare E-cell standard to delta G standard. Where is that equation? That's over here. Um, I do need to think about how many electrons are transferred. Um, so that's the only thing I don't really like about this problem, but that's okay. I will deal with it. Um, so I'm going to have my delta G standard being equal to NF. E-cell standard, uh, my standard hydro, my standard hydrogen electrode should involve a two electron transfer. Good, they're still highlighted, a two electron transfer. My chromium involves a three electron transfer. So I'm going to assume that this is a six electron transfer. So I'm going to assume that this is six because my standard hydrogen electrode is transferring two electrons and my chromium to chromium three is transferring three electrons. To balance that out, I'm going to assume that that is six. And this is ninety six thousand four hundred eighty five. Um, and the E-cell I already solved for is positive zero point seven four. So I get this to be equal to four, two, eight, three, nine. That. Hmm. Nope, I put that comma in the wrong place. It was like, what does my exponent say? Something different. That's not where that comma goes. Um, nine, four. Missed a number. There we go. Um, so that's in joules. So therefore in kilojoules, I get basically at four hundred twenty eight. Uh, oh, negative sign. Don't forget the negatives. I was like, what's wrong with this? Uh, my E-cell is positive, so my delta G should be negative. Um, and we can actually see that in the equation. So my sign should be in there. So there's a negative sign there. Um, and that really I should have been able to do from, from here. So getting this uh, E-cell standard being positive here should have told me that it should have been one of these two negative numbers in there. And then between my two negative numbers, I can make a decision. Okay, two left, two left. And then I get to have some coffee, some breakfast. Which the following is correct for the reaction below. So this is the time to remember that essentially we do put our, we should be able to read this left to right. Um, so some of the things that um, to keep in mind is I should have my uh, anode over here on the left. So I should have oxidation over here on the left. I should have my reduction at the cathode over here on the right. So since my chlorine is being oxidized, I want the chlorine here on the left. So things actually have chlorine here on the left is A and D and E. Whoa. Um, sorry, I said that because uh, E basically mixes up uh, calcium and chloride. Cause basically I should have my two half reactions separated by the salt bridge. So E is wrong because it's mixing together my half reactions and I don't like that. Then the thing is, um, I just have to decide. And the only real differences in between these two, between A and D, is this platinum here. Well, because I have this chloride ion is aqueous and this chlorine gas is a gas, I don't have anything physical to attach an electrode to. Like theoretically, I could attach electrode to like a solid calcium thing and that's fine. But I need to have a site of oxidation. I need to have a physical location for that. Uh, and that is why we need the platinum in there. So that's going to stay there. All right. Uh, last but not least, a battery can be considered as a galvanic cell. Yay. When the battery is dead, the cell potential is zero. Which the following is true when the cell potential is equal to zero. So this is one where granted, the problem actually states this part, um, which, which is in three of these, I realize. Um, so the problem tells you that. Um, and then from here, it's just which of the following other statements is true. Well, my standard cell, that's always at standard conditions. Um, so that's really not, so that's basically at really specific concentrations, uh, which we don't necessarily have here. Cause keep in mind that as we're talking about a battery working, we should expect the concentrations of things to change. We should expect my reaction to continue. Um, so we should expect the concentrations to shift and essentially my battery to run down. Um, but, so my E-cell would change, but my E-cell standard, that's just going to come off of the table. It's going to be at standard conditions. That's not going to change. Uh, so basically, anything with the standard in it, um, is not necessarily going to reach zero for our dead battery. Uh, it's just going to be the things essentially that change. Because our standards will be based off of values in a table because we're making assumptions that under standard conditions is always that one molar, one atmosphere. Um, and usually twenty five degrees Celsius. So your dead battery is basically when you start to run out of reactants and products and they're no longer at, or run out of reactants, pardon me. When you start to run out of reactants, and those are no longer than going to be at that one molar. All right, I got through all the questions. About forty five minutes. That's not too bad for that many questions. All right. Good luck, everybody.